Ma'am Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Commissioner Leitner. Commissioner Walz. Commissioner Race.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Mahoney. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Alwell.
I'm here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
This is your first opportunity for public comment. The guidelines are each individual will state their name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under the public comment and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time.
Good morning. I'd like to encourage everyone to go out and vote today. It is our primary and there are some very important choices to be made. I want to wish everyone here who's involved in their own primaries good luck. And with regard to the two millage proposals, I'd like to urge people to support the millage for the animal shelter and to vote against the millage for the county parks. I absolutely am irritated by the level of maintenance in Vanekook Lake Park. Apparently it's a new policy and I just cannot support it in any way. So I hope people vote against that parks millage. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Entertain a motion from the minutes of the July 10th study session.
Mr. Chair.
You have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Duly carried? J.DOT used oil tankers. Mr. Overton.
Since when do you have oil tankers?
Good morning. Mistress. Well, I wanted to throw out a joke and say this is really complicated, but it's not. A critical element of our recycling program is the supply chain of our asphalt cement, our binder that we use, also called Batuman. It's a pure grade, it's a PG 5828, so it's the same stuff used for hot mixed asphalt. And it actually saves us $10,000 to $15,000 per mile over other products in the industry right now. So it's our preferred method. We need two to three tanker loads per day to recycle a road. It's the main ingredient that binds together the ground up road product. At this time, we can only get one tanker per day. And all projections are that that restriction is going to continue because of a shortage of CDL drivers and trucking equipment. We need a particular kind of tanker with a rear discharge and also heavily insulated to keep the asphalt at a high degree, 350 degree temperature. So right now, we pay about $2,500 per day for that one tanker load. And one of the big cost items in there is what we call a demerge. That's the driver sitting there connected to our train. And that's why we can only get one truck, is because the trucking companies don't like to tie up their driver all day long like that. They're not hauling product. They're not making money, per se. So in talking with them, they're actually almost begging us to get our own trucks, because they're happy to sell the product, they're happy to work with us. We're still going to use that one truck for now, from that one vendor. He's got customers all over, the rest of his fleet is deployed. So the bottom line, there are three things. This freeze-up schedule gives us more flexibility. Secondly, it doubles our productivity. I said doubles our productivity because of the one tanker. We can get two done now. Our training is going very well. The crews are basically done at 11 o'clock to noon, and we need that second load. And thirdly, the return on investment is very fast. With the used tankers here that we've looked at in very good condition, we're looking at about a 25 to 30 day window, and these tankers are paid for. Any questions? I know it's a short meeting, I tried to take up as much time as I could.
You're normally pretty good at that, Chris. Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. So Chris, by my math, about 14 days for each tanker will pay for them, essentially.
Twenty-five to 30 days for each tanker. So if we actually can run three loads, yeah, we could pay for both tankers in that 25 to 30 day window. It just depends on the project that we're doing.
And then if we have product left in the tanker at the end of the day, is it necessary to take that back? Or do we have some place to hold it locally that we could reuse later? It seems like it's the same product we use on other things, right?
It is the same product that we use. The way we're rotating now is we make sure to empty our load. Sometimes when we get the large tanker that is supplied by a vendor, we have to send it back. It's actually expensive to do that. So without getting into details, we try to engineer our ending on a project so we don't have to send it back. In other words, you don't want to be heading downhill, for example, because then you can't empty out what's there. So we actually will cut a load short, just so we make sure we're either level or going uphill when we empty. So we'll make sure that our last load for the day is like that. In the event that there's quite a bit left, we would have to seek to empty that. We'd either have to take it back to the terminal or go locally here and dispose of it with our, like at Michigan Paving's terminal. We're talking to them, by the way, about having a local agreement so that we don't have to truck so far. Right now, we're only able to get it out of Bay City.
So that's the same product they use too? And if you had some excess amount left, we could potentially come to some agreement with them to either hold it or buy it, right?
Possibly. I'll talk with them to see. Sometimes they're nervous about taking another terminal's product for fear of contamination. But we'll have that discussion. It'll be a rare day that we actually have to empty some of a remaining load. We try very hard to not have to do that.
Thank you.
And assuming everything goes the way we would like, we expect to have an arrangement with Michigan Paving so that they can... Because right now, they don't have the equipment to heat it to 350 plus degrees?
Correct. We can actually get the oil, but it's the issue of heating it to 350, actually 360. By the time we load it into a cold tanker, you lose a little bit of that heat. So we want to have 350 degrees in transit. And then we can work with that oil till it drops to about 320, and then we have to stop. So that's one of the restrictions. Right now, we're on great lock. It holds its heat very well, and the tankers, we're getting, we get five or six hours of working time. So that's all going well. The only terminal right now that we found that can heat it is Bay City. We've talked to Marathon in the Detroit metro area, also locally here, Michigan Paving. Michigan Paving is looking at some capital investments in their facility here, which we're asking if we could possibly strike a partnership and have a tank dedicated for our program. Everything's favorable at this point, and we're just beginning to get into the details.
Chris, we have tractors to haul it with, obviously, right?
We're actually looking at some used tractors. We have new tractors coming. The ones we ordered a while back are coming in the next 30 to 60 days. At this point in time, we believe we're going to need probably two used tractors. We're not looking for new. We're just looking to augment our fleet. We're running short on those, and those are a big cost saver. So we're looking in that $25,000 to $50,000 price range to find a five to six-year-old tractor. We're actually working hard. At every turn, we look to find used equipment when we can. It's just very hard to get, you know, equipment that's actually has life left.
But if we had these two tankers tomorrow, we do have trucks to use to pull them, right?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, the origin machine itself, I've heard many people say they're seeing it just sitting around. Is this something that can help that process?
Yes. Short answer is yes. There's more to the issue. Every project takes a lot of preparation and mixed design work, laboratory work, but also just field preparation, mailboxes, driveways, things like that. So we actually will take a break. Yes, the machine is parked, but we're still preparing and gearing up for the next day's work or the next week's work and so forth. So there will be days the machine is resting, so to speak. I know that since we bought it, it sat for a couple, three weeks between Rose Hill and Maple Dale. That was because of a mixed design holdup and also training scheduling. So we're trying to walk before we run, make sure we do things carefully. But hereafter, we started Maple Dale, things are going very smoothly at this point. So we're going to see that machine running a lot more, particularly if we have the tankers to supply the oil. Yeah. I can, and I'll look to Mike to augment my answer, but I can tell you that scheduling involves a lot of factors. One obvious one is weather, but that's way out there. And that, in fact, is more the short-term scheduling. We look at prior commitments, we look at community needs, sometimes grant deadlines. Projects like Spring Arbor and Summit have tight deadlines with their bonding initiatives. So we also look at how we can best leverage what we have, our limited resources. Too much work to do. So we try to pick carefully what makes sense to save the county the maximum amount of money. And so it's a complicated answer, but I can tell you from the human side of things, we like to partner, and we like to fit that in if we possibly can. So Mike, if you want to augment that.
Yes, please.
Or redo my answer, whatever.
No, the, you know, I agree with what you said. Obviously, there is some first come, first served thinking going on, obviously. We're working on Summit currently, so we're not going to abandon Summit or anything like that to move on to another township, if you will. But at the same time, we take into consideration the needs of the road, the level of traffic on the road, is it primary road? You know, all those kind of issues come into play. And of course, is it connected to a road we're already doing in the neighboring adjacent township or something like that? Again, efficiency questions that we're looking at. But if a township waits to the end to move forward with road improvement, surely they're not going to be at the first in line. I mean, it is an order in that sense. I know, I think it is Blackman's looking to have a potential vote on that. You know, Blackman will not be before we finish Summit or, you know, Spring Arbor, I'm sure. But some of the roads that are highly traveled and primary and hence have real significant needs, they might jump in ahead of, say, you know, like a local street like mine or something like that. So you fit them in where you can.
Yeah. We're starting to put together next year's program. My goal, my strategic goal for our team is to get between 50 and 80 miles. So we've got that amount of work, so it's time for any possible projects to come forward so we can kind of juggle them and fit them in. There are strategic pauses with the train method where we want to cut to the KMA stationary plant method, and a lot of city work or municipal urban type projects would require that stationary plant method. So there's a little bit of rocket science behind it, and our team is still learning how to prioritize and fit those in. Like it's like putting a puzzle together, like a jigsaw. There's some art and skill to it. Well, we're open to buying a couple more machines. Crickets, okay.
City of Elkhorn, two.
Correct, we'll buy those, because they're not using them like we are.
Not Elkhorn.
And they're not using them like we are. We've heard a little bit about their training experience, so. I'll defer to the chairman, sorry.
Chris, can you give us a sort of a timeline of what roads you are doing and so on? So when our constituents ask, "What about us?", we can say that this is a timeline that they're doing it based upon these needs and so on. I just want to, I want to have some answers to give to people.
Yeah. We're struggling with that a little bit on a couple of fronts. One is people in rural areas of the county wonder why we're working in Summit and Spring Arbor. Sometimes they've missed the news, you know, a year ago that the millage passed and that they have a program, and we're under a deadline to get their roads done. That's the big why. And so when we get Facebook requests or phone calls, we try to explain the road funding question and how you have to come up with local match dollars in order for us to even do any construction by state law. So that usually, you know, is an eye-opener for folks, and they understand that. The other piece is that contractors are busier than I've seen for two decades. I think the 90s was the last time I saw contractors this busy. And so to get the lowest possible prices, we give a lot of flexibility in their schedule. And perhaps, if I were to be honest and critiquing, I think this year we gave too much, just because we did want those good prices for our townships and for ourselves. But we needed maybe some interim deadlines, especially with schools and so forth. Thankfully, our contractor's been great to work with. They have juggled things, they're making it work, some of the school areas to make sure the roads, streets are done near the schools. The rest of the streets will come. It's just everyone is extremely busy. There's construction everywhere, contractors are backlog, the DEQ is backlog, it's hurting some of our project schedules, so we were hoping to get done this year or moving to next year. So the entire industry is extremely busy right now.
Thank you. Which we knew it would be.
Yeah, we predicted this.
Yeah, exactly.
We're ahead of the curve, thankfully, but still we're a victim to some of it.
And one of the other things to note is what we hope to have is online so that you can look at a map that shows which roads are going to be in 18, which are in 19, which are in 20, which are 21, right on out there. Because J.DOT, especially when it comes to the recycling side of it, they have to be, you know, way ahead of the curve before they can actually touch the road with the mixed design and, you know, cleaning up the canopy and all that stuff, have a plan for all that. Those crews have to go out first. But I think the more challenging part from a resident standpoint is they want to know where their road is. I see it's in 18, but when is it going to start? And that is, as Christopher alluded to, is much more difficult because of the flexibility with the contractors that we have, because we gave them the window, and of course, they have other competing projects that they're working with too. So, yeah, we can tighten it up, but again, I think to some degree, it's, you know, we can, we can say it's 18. But to say it's going to be August 1st, that's a much more challenging proposition. Yes, sir.
Mike, that map that you talk about is exactly what we see typically at the annual meeting with M.DOT, J.DOT, and the City of Jackson. And that's the perfect audience, I think, to have all that ahead of time in both a map form and written form, to lay it out there, because it's a good thing to get, a good report to get from both the state to know what's going on and the city, if you travel through it or live in it, and for the county as well. So hopefully, when that meeting rolls around, we'll be way ahead of the game and have everything laid out for them.
Much as we can get real time, meaning the map changes color after they finish Maple Dale, you know, so they know what's been completed, those kind of activities. And with your, I know you've recently employed a communications person.
Yep. We're working on this, actually. So I hope to have something in our semi-annual report for the AA committee next week. And then we'll obviously get it on our website as well. It is fluid, it changes. We generally know our federal aid projects. One of our unknowns is our township work. Sometimes townships come in after this meeting you're talking about that's held. Sometimes our township projects flow in six months later. And so obviously, we can append the map and, you know, edit it and add that information. But it's fluid. We try to be nimble and responsive with all those requests and fit them in as long as budget, time, and money allow.
Chris, what's the number of your communications person now?
Her name is Shnita Davis, and you can just call our main number at the office and ask for her. She's new, learning the ropes, but she's very excited and very motivated, so.
So I don't have to give people your name anymore? I can just give them, Ms. Davis?
She'll, and she knows how to reach me if needed. So, yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
To make everyone aware, before we make a motion here, we're planning 25 years out right now at Jack's Policy and Tactical. So, and you, I don't want to say you've missed the public comment period, but it has been open for the past 90 days. If you were interested to do it, go to the Region 2 website. At least you can read the draft document on what we're going to be doing with our roads the next 25 years. Be aware of that. We don't plan these 15 minutes in advance. Region 2 does a very good job on organizing our road system and coordinating federal, state, and local road systems and road agencies. And we also do meet monthly on the second Tuesday right here. So if you'd really like to be involved in the discussion, we'd be happy to have you attend. And you can learn a little bit more about how we build roads and bridges and everything else. And if at the end after the motion, if you could talk a little bit about Moon Lake, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. I entertain a motion for the used oil tankers. Motion in support. Any questions to the motion? Seeing or hearing none. Please post the vote. Six, nothing. Go by your used oil tankers.
We'll try to pick them up today. We have to get them inspected, and there's some procedural issues, but we hope to get them in service in about a week. Thank you for expediting that.
Now, you've received information on Moon Lake from the state and been authorized. What do you think the schedule is on that? Is it going to be 19?
What we're learning is now that we have the DEQ permit and everything's in order, it's now been, because DOT requires the DEQ permits to all be in order before they obligate money and then even put it into their timeline. So there's a little bit of a serial process and can't pass this point until. So we finally got those, and now it is moving through the DOT letting process. Short answer is it looks like we're going to have construction rolling in December, January, and it can be a winter construction project. In fact, for environmental reasons, it's preferred. So it's a precast arch type of construction. And we have a neighborhood meeting planned for Tuesday night next week at 7:30. I think everyone we checked with can make it. You can make it, Commissioner Race? Okay. So we'll be discussing that. Completion is June of next year, so that's substantial completion. There may be some grass seeding and things like that to do. One of the requirements in the DEQ permit that made things challenging and pushed the budget up was no impacts to the wetlands. So there's some sheet piling that has to be installed along the causeway, the road, as it approaches the bridge. Fortunately, it's not that tall. One of the original proposals would have been way up in the air, and we, we had a lot of discussions back and forth on how that wasn't feasible or even desirable, given the fact that this isn't really a flood, you know, heavily flowed area, especially with the dam just downstream. So we got that resolved, and so I think we're moving forward. Any other questions on that? One of our biggest concerns is aesthetics. We'd like to use a form liner with a natural stone appearance from the waterway, so boaters have a nice, beautiful bridge to pass through. And so I think we have two options we're looking at, kind of a river rock rounded stone pattern and then a field stone, more blocky, bricky kind of pattern. So we'll kind of let the public give us some feedback on that. That answer the questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Administrator Overton, audit presentation.
Now, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's, what we have is the annual presentation of the 2017 audit. From Raymond, our auditors, we have Nate Baldeman, partner with the firm. He'll be, he said he could do an hour presentation or he could do a five-minute, 10-minute. But I know he prefers to be short on this one, but he's going to go over some significant numbers and the findings for the year.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. As I go through, I'm just going to walk through. I'm going to start with the main document, the CAFR, walk through a couple of things, just point out a couple of things. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, or, you know, I'll also take questions at the end, so.
Mr. Chairman. Minister, can I ask a question at the front end? What's our plan today? Are we going to approve this today, or are we looking to vote on it? Because I'd rather if we waited with three commissioners missing.
Yeah, take it through the whole process.
Well, it says action on the agenda here, but I was hoping it was not. Thank you.
All right. So this report is your comprehensive annual financial report. It is, you know, it does kind of take financial reporting to the ultimate step, because you do prepare the full CAFR. Not all counties do, not all municipalities do, but it does have a certification from the GFOA, which is the highest standard that's out there for financial reporting. There's various sections in the report. Our audit opinion actually doesn't come in until page 13. This audit opinion really is the only section of the report that's ours. We helped preparing the rest of the report, just out of convenience for the county, because we do it a ton throughout the year. We're doing these financial, kind of financial statements all the time. So it's just kind of more of an efficiency matter. But this letter does point out what management's responsibilities. They, this responsibility for the financial statements is still management's. It's not ours. Ours is to perform an audit so that we can give an opinion. The opinion that we provided was an unmodified or a clean opinion. It's what you want to get in a financial report. So the other thing to point out in that opinion is that it's, you know, an opinion is reasonable assurance that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So it's not absolute assurance. We're not looking at every transaction. It's not saying that things are perfect, but it's saying you can rely on the information that's in here to make management decisions and board decisions. The actual financial statements, I just want to point out a couple of things on the government-wide financial statements. You don't spend a lot of time looking this throughout the year. You're focused more on those fund statements. But these statements are continuing to change. This year, I wanted to point out the fact that because of how the standards are implemented, you know, you issued the debt this year to pay your pension obligations, but just based on how you implemented the standard a few years ago, you're kind of a year behind in what shows up in the financial statement. So this year, what you have is an increase in your long-term debt, your general long-term debt for the bonds. There's a, the net pension liability still is out there, it hasn't been reduced, but there's an asset that's in its place, or technically, it's a deferred outflow that offsets that. And then next year, those contributions will go in, and your net pension liability will be reduced. So I just wanted to point that out, because I didn't want you to look at the financial statements and say, wow, that number's still out there. What happened? We bonded for this. That's the reason that that number is out there. The other thing that I would point out is there's a liability called net other post-employment benefit obligation. That number is based on funding. The fact that you, you don't have a plan that you're funding into, that's on a funding method that that liability is calculated, it's among the contributions that you haven't made over time. Next year, that number is going to change. You'll be implementing, it's Gadsby 75 for other post-employment benefits, and the entire liability that you have out there, that's well over, that's over $100 million, will go in as a liability on these government-wide financial statements. So just wanted to point that out. Those are big changes that are coming, that standard. There was a standard for the plan itself. If you had a plan, that would have been effective this year, but because you don't actually have a trust fund and you're setting money aside in, that's why that wasn't implemented this year.
If I might be clear, that liability's talking about is healthcare.
Right. It's the healthcare, sorry. Yeah, the healthcare obligation that's out there, so. The other thing I would point out is there was new reporting this year that was required. Legislation that was passed at the end in December last year required, there's a new form, the 5572, where you now have to report your pension obligations as well as your other post-employment benefits, your retiree healthcare have to be... Your retiree healthcare have to be reported to the state and they have a mechanism that they're tracking. And if you hit certain milestones, you have to then file a corrective action plan, so. And they keep on expanding that form. I mean, that form changed, I think, a day or two after we submitted this one, they added new requirements, new things that they're reporting. And I think it's going to be evolution over time of what has to be reported, so. For the general fund, when you look at the statements, the best place to look and see what happened in the general fund for the year is on page 40 of the report. That's the budget to actual statement. And you'll see there that the fund balance basically stayed consistent. There was a slight drop of $67,000 in fund balance that brought the balance from 9.6 million to 9,571,000. And then the other fund that most counties look at, if you wanted to see those, the enterprise funds, including the delinquent tax revolving fund, is on page 43 and 44 and 45. You'll see the delinquent tax revolving fund on the income statement is on page 44. And there was a reduction in that fund balance, that net position of about 2.1 million that brought the balance down to 11.4 million at the end of the year. I will point out this year, in the past, we've noticed the medical care facility, we actually audit, we picked up that audit this year. So you might see that change in the opinion, but it's because we actually were doing the audit this year for the medical care facility. Then the last thing I would point out, as I'm just trying to go very high level, kind of some key schedules that I like to look at when I'm looking at the pension obligations and the retiree healthcare. Start on page 90. This is, will give you some trend information on the plan. But again, this is, this is for the county's reporting, which is kind of a year behind. So there is a separate retirement system report that's issued separately that you can see the information that's up to date for the plan. But that information is on page 90 and 91 for the pension. And then the retiree healthcare starts on page 93. So that's all I really wanted to cover in the CAFER. Move on to the single audit report. When we're doing the, we have, there's two components to our audit. We have the financial audit, which is focused on this CAFER. The second piece of it is a federal awards audit. Because you spend more than $750,000 in federal awards, we're required to do what's called a single audit. In that audit, we look at all of your programs. Those are listed in the separate single audit act compliance report, starting on page 2. And we do an analysis on those funds, do a risk assessment, and then we pick the funds that we're going to audit. On the federal award side, we tested the child support enforcement or Title 4D program. And then we tested the medical assistance program as well. And on those programs, we had, on the federal award side, we had no findings, nothing to report on those. However, we did have, on the financial reporting side, we did have some material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. Some of them are similar to last year related to material audit adjustments. I've talked about in the past how anytime we come in and we find something during our audit process that's incorrect and it has to be corrected, that has to be reported as a material audit adjustment. It's, you know, kind of by definition, internal controls didn't detect the error and that error had to be corrected, so we report those issues. We had, we kind of have separated it over the last couple of years between the road department because it is kind of a separate set of controls that works with the road department. They have their own accounting system, you know, and there's a fair amount of issues that go between the two because while they have a separate system, they have to reconcile with what the county system is. And there's been some issues over the last couple of years of having those things reconcile. So that's what, some of the information is, some issues that are coming up and resulted in audit adjustments. This year, we also, the timing of the audit was, the preparedness when we started the audit wasn't great. I know a lot of that had to do with some changeover that happened in the finance department, losing one of your best people and having to replace it. That's always something that causes delays, but there were significant delays that delayed the audit. Again, we were able to get it done in time, pushing up to the deadline, but it did cause some delays. And then we had one other finding related to how cash disbursements and documentation is maintained in the sheriff's department. Those were the items that raised to the level to be reported in the single audit report where they were either material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We did have some other items that are less significant, that we pointed out more room for improvement or items that weren't as significant that we included as management letter comments. And those are in the separate letter. In attachment A to the management letter, it's titled Independent Auditors Communication With Those Charged With Governance, so. That's all I really had specifically, but would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Allo?
Got several just overall questions and comments. One of the notes I read, I dumped the document, I have to pull it back up, but it spoke to outstanding checks at JDOT or JCDOT. What kind of amount are you talking overall, if you know? Is it a huge amount or just?
If it was huge, I would have, we would have raised the level. I don't think it's significant, but it's still, it's a compliance area. The state of Michigan requires that anything over a certain age, you go through the process to try to find those people. And if you can't find them, you have to sheet it back to the state so they can hold it. And ultimately, somebody could go back to the state to try to get money.
Again, I don't have the document up that I saw the note in, but I did, I see that it went back to 2008, some of them? And was that caught before or not?
It's a repeat, yes, it was something that we had commented on last year. And I'm not, I don't know how far back we've had it, but I know for sure last year we had the comment.
Well, that leads me to my next question. Are there any repeat comments from last year or last audit?
Yes.
In this audit that have not been taken care of?
The first two, the material audit adjustment findings, the first two findings in the single audit report were both repeat. And then in this document in attachment A, the first three, I'll say, and they denote repeat comment on them, so.
Okay. And then was there any special attention paid to sheriff's department funds? I think the public's looking for reassurance that everything is on the up and up with finances there. There were discussions publicly about the commissary fund. So I'm curious what kind of special attention was paid to any of that, in particular the commissary fund and the drug forfeiture fund.
Remembering off the top of my head exactly which procedures we performed, I do know that we did have, you know, part of our process is to review and talk to management, talk to, you know, those charged with governance, Mr. Shotwell and others about where the risks are and what things are out there. Sheriff's Department definitely came up and we definitely performed some additional procedures on that to see, and that's a direct, the reason we have the finding is the special attention that we placed on those, on that department.
Okay. And then my last written question I've got is I noted a comment in one of the letters about fuel purchases at JDOT, or the procedures anyway, not necessarily the purchases themselves, about use of credit cards for that and how they're left in the vehicles. And that isn't the best procedure. So there's two questions that spring from that. One is, were there any concerns, specific concerns or complaints about that, number one? And number two, is it the same procedure that we use in the rest of the county vehicles, Mike, or not with purchase of gas? If you know.
The one comment about the purchase of gas regarding county vehicles was that I think they were leaving the card in the vehicle. And so we've asked them not to do that.
Well, I think the comment was a little beyond that. It also spoke of lack of receipts to go with it, I think. Okay. Well, again, I just, I'm curious if there were any complaints or suspicions of things being wrong there or if it's just you're commenting saying this is a bad procedure?
It was more of looking at the procedure and saying, you know, when we noted that those things were happening, that review that procedure. Again, we didn't feel that it raised to a significant level to go into the other report, but that it was something to be looked at, evaluated and determined if there's an improvement to that policy to make sure that you reduce the threat of any kind of fraud happening, so.
And that's fine. I'm not accusing that of being the case, but I think when the public sees it, that's probably a question that comes to their mind. So wanted to ask it so you can give your comment. That's all I had written down. Thank you.
Any other questions? We thank you. I guess we'll see you back Tuesday night.
Yep, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Overton, do you have other items? Commissioners? Commissioner Lightner?
Today is $2 Tuesday at the fair, so fair rides are $2. Lots of vendors are having $2 specials on food and concessions. And we have a large rock show tonight, so we have Pop Evil and Theory of a Dead Man starting at 7 o'clock.
You got a little ahead of me. I just wondered if there were any issues here. Thank you, though. Hey, we've arrived at public comment. Anyone like to speak under public comment? Seeing none. Commissioner comments. Shared by Commissioner Lightner. Mr. Williams?
Chairman, obviously we have two important millages coming before us today as Peter Bormuth had indicated. And I'll be interested to see how the Parks Millage actually goes down. And I think that there's probably some, regardless of how it ultimately goes down, if it's successful or not successful, probably some critiquing that we should probably take a look at in terms of the county's role in supporting millages or not supporting millages. But I think you and I and others have had really good conversations about that process, but I think certainly a learning experience. As has been indicated, I've had a few contacts, not a lot, but a few contacts from individuals who are questioning the county's role in getting that information out. And again, I just wanted to bring that up for public comment to make sure that it's, or commissioner comment I should say, to make sure that's in the record and that we actually do get a chance to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we are adjourned.